I am going to call the Board of Selectmen Public Executive Budget Session to order. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. This is a public executive budget session, no public comment. And it's, the item is to consider and act upon proposed revenues and expenditures in the amount of, wow. Six, six million sixty-seven, five hundred and twenty-two for water pollution control authority for the fiscal year July one, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, as recommended by the first selectwoman. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I will second the motion.
Is there any comment or discussion on this item?
None for me.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item number four, Public Executive Budget Session. To consider and act upon proposed revenues and expenditures in the amount of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred for the Fairfield Regional Fire Training School for the fiscal year July twenty, July first, two thousand and twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, as recommended by the first selectwoman, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion on this item? Say none?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, uh, item carries unanimously. Item number five. To consider and act upon proposed revenues and appropriations in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five, forty-five, six forty-two for the general fund for the fiscal year of July, of July first, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, as recommended by the first selectwoman. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
And, um, before we open up in the discussion area, I thought this might be a good time for me to go through my reorganization and I, if that's okay with the both of you?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, um, I just want to say I was hoping to do this before, you know, a public forum and before the Board of Finance, but I realized that it would be a good idea for me to stay here late Friday night with my team, putting this together so I could present it to you today, this morning. And I just want to say, start off by saying, um, the reason we couldn't disclose a lot of this, uh, or any of it actually, before, um, before last week was because of HR issues pertaining to the two positions that were eliminated in the budget. And so obviously at the Council of the HR Director, we should, it's not appropriate for, um, it would not have been appropriate for me to disclose the entire reorg because it included that. So when the budget came out on that Friday is when we were able to then have those discussions in public. So I just want to start off by saying, and I emailed, Jennifer emailed the PowerPoint to both of you before we started. And I just want to start off by saying I want to thank my chief of staff, the C O, Tom Bremer, and my H R Director, Jim Hazelcamp, for their assistance in crafting and implementing this comprehensive view, review of town government and our operations and services. Uh, this is, this has been a multi-phase reorganization of town government. My administration has initiated a long overdue reorganization of town government that began with an operational review of all eighteen departments, which was concluded over the past year. The initial review determined that we, that there were efficiencies to be gained by realigning positions, reorganizing departments, implementing technology solutions, and instituting management and employee training. The end result of the plan will be a leaner, more efficient town government that provides quality people-centric services for our community while meeting our statutory obligations. I am extremely proud of all of our town employees and the work that they do for our community. This reorganization will also ensure that their time and talent are utilized in the best manner and to provide them with the support and technology to perform their jobs more efficiently. So the reorganization is a multi-phase plan. So phase one was the operational review I spoke of of our town department. Phase two, implementing these people solutions, right? So that's in progress now. Also, the phase three part is the digital transformation, that's still in progress. And the to-do list is the data and additional review. So the data that we will receive just internally over the next year of how this is working will allow us to do additional review and make additional changes. The operational view of the town, so the phase one goals and objectives. So that was to gain efficiency, streamline operations, realign responsibilities, and provide better service to our residents and businesses, and reduce personnel costs. Phase one actions taken, evaluated existing organizational structures, reviewed all eighteen departments, and that meant sitting in a lot of long meetings over many months, talking to each department head, working with them directly to find out exactly how their departments work and how we can better streamline them or make them more efficient. We identified where redundancies existed, determined the need for additional resources, identified areas of efficiency, and we introduced technology where appropriate. And we incentivized early retirement, created shared services resulting in efficiencies and cost savings, restructure responsibilities that result in reduced headcount, refocus department responsibilities, and create new positions to address emerging requirements. The phase two is we restructured eleven out of eighteen departments, implemented the voluntary early retirement incentive program, V R I P, net elimination of four positions, and a net reorganization saving five hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and four in two thousand and twenty-two. Six hundred and thirteen, that, that constitutes six hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one salary savings, offset by seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars in reorganization-related costs. We engaged a recruiting firm to assist in hiring a conservation and budget director, and that is on our agenda today to approve that contract. The H R Department reached out to, I think probably about five different ones and interviewed them and got information and chose this one. Also, he met with our conservation chairperson of the commission to talk about them being, that commission being involved in the whole process because they do hire the next director. It has to be approved by me, but they are the ones that hire. So they have to be intricately involved in this process. And we wanted to make sure, because we have two high-level positions, the budget director and the conservation director, and want to make sure that we were getting the best candidates possible. And so that's why we decided to go with this search firm. Phase one, realignment of responsibilities and positions. So if you look at the slide, um, you can see we added a junior buyer position to the purchasing department. Um, as we all know, our town government was involved in a lot of, it had public corruption issues. Obviously, we all know this. And the purchasing department was really a key department in cleaning up this problem. The policies that were put forth by the Board of Finance, and now they're even creating more policies in concert with the working group that my C O, Tom Bremer, led with all the departments that are associated with purchasing. And D P W and the finance department, they spent months working on this. And there is a draft policy that is actually very good, uh, that's being reviewed now by and outside of, it's the Benafani, right, uh, to look at that, the Board of Finance appropriated some funds to sort of review the purchasing policy that we put together. And this is all due to the D P W audit, which we've all read, right? And, and our town bodies have read. And it, it highlighted a lot of issues that needed to be addressed. So we felt adding this junior buyer to the purchasing department is going to be an important piece of making sure we have accountability in our town government and that we are addressing all the issues that were brought up in the D P W department as it pertains to purchasing. The conservation department. So we added a new position, the wetland compliance officer. That was a part-time position in the office. And when we lost our director, I had asked that individual if she would add additional hours to her, her workday, and with the idea of making her a full-time position because her job is very intricate and she has a lot of good experience. So we added that position. Engineering. We swapped out the position of CAD specialist with a senior civil engineer. And we learned over the last year, I mean, as you all know, right? Our engineering department is involved in so many aspects of our town government. They are involved in bridges, sewers, flood mitigation, street lights, realignments of roads. I mean, the list really goes on and on. And the wastewater treatment facility. And we, and we currently just have the director who, who does so much work. And it was obvious to me and to that department that we needed another engineer. Laura Pooley, who has been with our town for a very long time, who is an amazing engineer, who's working on the wastewater treatment facility, has told the town that she will be retiring next year. So we need, we believe that we needed an engineer to be in that position, to learn under Laura and then be able to step into her role. And then we would fill that position when that happens with another engineer. Because Mr. Hurley too, has been with the town for a number of years. And I'm assuming in the next, you know, five, six, or whatever years, he will also be retiring. So we want to make sure that we are not left without the help. We have that opportunity in this department to ensure that we're moving forward and we have a bench to fill as, as people move up. Uh, the recreation department. So we looked at the golf course mechanic and we had a long conversation with the director of Parks and Rec at Anthony Calabrese. And we said, what did you, what would you think about subbing out a lot of this mechanical work? Considering we will be purchasing new equipment and let's see how that works. And instead of a full mechanic, we would, we would put money aside, and we have included it in the budget, to send out our equipment to be serviced outside of the organization. And he thought this could, this could work. So we are gonna, we are gonna do that, we are eliminating that position. That position, oh, by the way, was, um, the individual took the V R I P plan. So that, no one had to be terminated or laid off in that position. The library position. There's a custodian, there's several full-time custodians for the library. And I sat down with Helene and we talked about, you know, streamlining some of this. And how could we eliminate, and that's another one that took the V R I P, and could we add a part-time person to fill in the gaps where she most needs it? As opposed to a full-time person who's there who may not be working the entire time. And Helene agreed that she thinks this will work perfectly. And so that we eliminated that position. The economic development, it was a secretary aide position and Mark, in consultation with Mark, and the need to grow our economic development department and really be engaging actively with the community, we rewrote that job description to include marketing abilities because that we think is so important as opposed to the simple job description of a secretary aide. So we rewrote that job description. We added in the fire inspector, fire marshal inspector. This is something that the chief has brought up for the last several years. Before I came in, he also had asked for it last year and it did not make it through the budget process. Obviously, we were dealing with a global pandemic and people were very concerned about any new changes. Uh, and we want to keep our, we wanted to have a zero to protect our community. So that position didn't survive in the budget last year. And as I've spoken about before and chief has spoken about, um, we are behind in our inspections. And this is a matter of public safety. So we front-load all these fees. So when a, a, a business or a development goes in, or with Sacred Heart, or Fairfield University builds something, we spend, they give, their permit fees are very high for the fire service. And they pay them upfront, but they expect to be inspected according to the statute. And we're having trouble keeping up with that. So that's why that position has been added. If you go to the next, um, uh, slide, full-time staff changes. So in the D P W department, and I, I believe Jared, we have our, um, our department heads are, are ready to come on if there's any questions about any of this.
We can get that one.
Okay, because maybe Marsilio might want to jump on just after we're done with this. There might be some questions about his department. Um, so Bucky talked a lot about, um, when he worked in different towns, he had a finance manager in the department. And so he felt that that, and I actually, after he explained what they did for him in the past, really watching over the spending that goes on in D P W with a fine team's comb, and to making sure that it's being translated appropriately to the finance department. He said that he thought this was a valuable position and I agree. Uh, doing, uh, doing part to the D P W audit and the fact that we had a lot of, we had a lack of oversight in this area. So we felt that this position would be an important one to add. Uh, the scale house labor, this is a change, and Bucky can speak a little bit more to that if he, if he jumps on. Um, some of these other changes, mechanic, maintenance, repair, and auto equipment operation. And then he can look over to the eliminated positions. Um, the solid waste and recycling manager formerly held that position with Mike from Bruski. We are taking that position and dissipating those responsibilities into the D P W director and to other positions in D P W. So we looked very closely at all of these positions that will allot many, many hours. And we decided that these, these certain positions, the way we've moved them, will be able to work more efficiently and we could reduce headcount. Uh, planning and zoning, a zoning enforcement officer and planner being added there. And we eliminated the planner position. So it's just a change in job description essentially, uh, more, more qualification. And then in our, in our building department, we had talked a lot about this during the process of my administration, talking about reorganization. And, you know, we had hoped that more admins would have taken the V R I P plan. And unfortunately, we didn't get a whole lot of that because we could have done a lot more of this. And what you see there is floaters. So for example, um, the three permitting departments that are across from one another, conservation, building, and zoning, you know, they're all intricately, um, connected to one another. And so typically, these departments have a full-time admin. Now, building is the biggest of the three, it is the busiest of the three. Uh, they have two full-time admins. But the other departments, really what, what I've been, what we've learned is that admins really to have two in a department is mostly to cover lunch shifts and also cover when someone's on vacation or sick. So we have come up with, and we have looked at this in other municipalities where they have floaters. So if the floater from building could go over into zoning for a bit, then they could go over to conservation. You know, when the need is there, they can jump in and be proactively helping all three of those intricately connected departments. We would have liked to do that in some other departments, but we just didn't get the V R I P, um, you know, people to elect into it in the admin, at the admin sections as much. So we are starting off with that and hopefully we'll be able to do more of that as time goes on. And hopefully Bucky will jump on at some point at the end and we can, um, we can have some more discussion because I know D P W had a lot of movement, so that may elicit some discussion. Um, implement, implementation of people solutions. Update job descriptions. I like, I think I spoke to you both about this quite a lot in the beginning, especially during V R I P, um, that the job descriptions in our town hall are, are interesting. Most, uh, most are like in typewriter font, and a lot of them say stenographer qualifications. And so they just don't really, um, they don't rise to the level of a twenty-first century town hall operation. So we have been busy updating a lot of job descriptions. And that process continues. Um, hire for open positions, budget director, conservation director, and we are, been interviewing for the building official. I've had some very good interviews and hopefully I'll be able to announce a new building official very soon to you. Provide management and employee training. So when I came in here and when I hired Mr. Hazelcamp, we looked back and we simply were not investing in our employees. We weren't providing managerial training for our department heads, who are experts in their field. However, they don't have, uh, they weren't given this training to be managers of their department. So we are, we had scheduled a lot of this and then COVID hit, so we had to, we had to stop it. And so we are looking forward to getting back into on track and employee training as well. And provide customer service-centric culture. Uh, I, this is something I talked about with the town, the town departments when I first came in. I met with all the department heads and with the employees in each department. And said, I, I felt very strongly, uh, someone who ran, has run a business for over thirty years, that we need to have very strong customer service in this town. And I have learned a lot in this position over the last, um, the last year and a half, uh, where we need strength in some of our departments as far as customer service goes. So I met again, uh, I would say about a month ago with each, all of our department heads in smaller groups because of COVID, and talked about my mission and a vision and a memo that I ended up sending out to all our employees, a pledge, if you will, that, uh, certain things have to be handled in a way, in a certain way going forward. And the digital transformation piece, um, complete implementation of online H R application portal. So what we did, uh, Mr. Hazelcamp looked into this. We were going through the old sort of format to post jobs and we weren't really, I don't think enough eyes were seeing our job, um, our job applications. So he implemented this new program where we're getting a lot more eyes looking at our openings, which is good for us. It opens up the pool. We implemented online, we implemented, we passed this in the budget last year and we were a little delayed because of COVID, but we're about to pull the trigger on implementing the online licensing permitting for building, zoning, conservation, fire marshal, health, tax assessor, tax collector, and sewer department. Those are all permitting departments. And this is going to really streamline how we do our permitting going forward. And it's going to reduce, um, the amount of work hours that we're currently putting into these permitting. Online is going to make a really, a huge change for us in our permitting department. And we're, uh, we're implementing the townwide time and attendance. Now, this was approved in last year's budget. And it is, it's actually, you know, you'd think it's just, you know, you put on the computer thing and it just happens, but it's a lot more complicated, um, than people would think. It has to be integrated into the payroll system and munis. And it's, it's actually a giant undertaking, but we're going to get it done. And it's important that we do this because, um, well, for, for one, efficiency. We have D P W employees standing in line down at the garage, literally in a long line every single morning, punching into a clock. And in the library, uh, Helene is passing around, excuse me, paper where people fill in their hours and then have to be signed off. It's very inefficient. Additionally, um, a lot of the contracts, our union contracts, uh, require the town to pay out on vacation time. And so there, we, we've learned that there's, there's not really a, um, there's no collection of time. Unless someone puts it in, there's no collection of how much vacation someone took, when people took sick time. And this is also to be in, uh, in compliance with, um, uh, our, hour and wage laws. So this is an important thing we're going to be putting in, but it's going to take some time. We had, we paid for it in last budget, but it's going to make a huge difference in accountability going forward. Um, and we're also conducting a structural and safety assessment of all our town buildings, which I think is going to be vitally important and is going to give us a blueprint about our safety issues and also about some of our structural issues in our town buildings. Data and additional reviews. The electron, uh, electronic timekeeping permitting will generate the data needed to identify additional areas where efficiencies can be gained and cost savings can be identified and implemented. These changes in the reorganization and to be able to watch it be implemented over the next year is going to, uh, provide valuable information and insight as how we can do further changes as we go forward as a town. So I will, um, end it there and I will open it up for any questions anyone has. Well, there's a spreadsheet too, attached, um, and, and, I mean, we could talk now and if you want Jared to go through that piece of it, we're happy to do that as well.
Um, um, did you have something you wanted to say or?
I'm all good right now, you go right ahead, Nancy.
Uh, well, I'll say good morning first and foremost. Um, and I guess, uh, I'm, I have to take a, a deep breath here because I'm actually, I appreciate all the work and I appreciate, um, I guess my takeaway in this moment is that I'm actually very frustrated. Um, you, I was just emailed this plan at nine fifty-six. I, I appreciate the presentation, so I, it's hard for me to go out of the gate with kind of a pushback, but that's exactly what I'm doing. Um, I received the plan at nine fifty-six, I hear you're going through it now, that we don't have the opportunity to hear from the public. Um, and again, all of that may be like legal and allowed and not a violation of anything, but I just feel like the public deserve to hear a lot of this before, um, we wade in. I feel, and I did come to this morning with an open mind and I, I'm still trying to approach this, this session today with an open mind. But, um, I'm finding it really hard to be able to make any kind of an informed decision. Um, some of the stakeholders, for instance, conservation, um, you know, I appreciate the review and I do appreciate the time and energy and attention that goes into it. And for some of the departments, you know, I know that there is a willingness to, to give it a try. Um, and that's fine, but you know, a lot of the inbound commentary we've collectively received, specifically on the conservation issue, is that the stakeholders didn't agree with the decision and that, um, Mr. Carey, who was currently serving in the role of conservation director, didn't spend time and energy, not because it wasn't warranted, but because he was focused so, um, so much on, on the work he was doing with D P W. So there's just, it raises unfortunately for me so many more questions than we'll be able to answer today. And, um, you know, as I said, I, I do respect and appreciate the months and months of work that goes into this. But I feel that I'm a representative voice for some people who, um, don't feel that this budget for lots of reasons is reflective of their values and their concerns and their real fears. Um, and I do believe that there are a lot of good faith discussions that we can have. Um, and again, I'll get into that in a bigger picture, but just my first response to this, to this plan, one that I had asked for at last week's meeting, to get it today at nine fifty-six, to hear from you now. Again, I think there's some good information there, but, um, for me, it is more a source of frustration and concern than it does make me feel better. It's not to say with some more time with it, with questions down the line, but, um, having to vote on, on this today is, is really concerning. And I may be in the minority of the three of us, but, um, feel that it's important because I, I have a feeling that people listening in, some people are going to have that same level of frustration, um, if not more. So I do want to dive into some of this. So I do want to dive into some of this, but it's less a response to, it's more about the overall timing and, than anything, I guess I would say, so.
Can I?
And, you know, this is different. I know it's different for probably a lot of people because this has never been done in the town of Bearville, ever. And so this is new, and, you know, due to the HR issues and being, you know, respectful of other people, it, it was difficult to be able to come fully out with all of the details of the reorganization plan. Excuse me. And also, again, I, I, I'll say that I know the town has never done this to this extent. And so, you know, my responsibility as the CEO of the town is to do this work, you know, every day and to work to try to, in my opinion, deliver the best services we can for our community. And so, you know, as you pointed out, it's been, it's been a tremendous thousands of hours, literally, over, over a long period of time, just working on this. And it's based on, you know, the day-to-day being here and the, and the information you get, you gain from the, you know, on, on, on the job sort of work. And so, you know, I, I'm sorry that I couldn't really include you and Tom in that more, but I look forward to the data that we will get from this over the next year and being able to share that with, with the town bodies and also with the community. You know, I was pretty upfront in my newsletter over the last several months, talking a lot about VRIP to our residents and explaining it, you know, what I want to do, why I want to do it, maybe not to the level of detail about who, who is going to be added and what's going to change, but that change was coming. And so I, I received actually quite a bit of positive response from our residents, saying that they liked that. You know, they thought that we should be making some changes to our town government. So I'm hoping that we're going to have a lot of good information from this next year based on these changes and that we could go forward and learn even more, and I'll be able to report that back to everyone.
So.
Can I just follow up to that? And, and thank you. I, I would just assert that we may have a better time if by, throughout the process next year, and you used the word being inclusive and, you know, being included in some of that. And again, I know there, there is a fine line about the day-to-day operations and what, and, and I respect that role, and I'm not asking to be inserted there, but I'm simply saying being included along the way in a process may allow for a more informed discussion at this table and, and in this process. And there's a lot of this kind of like, well, trust me, and we're going to find out the data, and, and that may be, but I do think that there are a lot of people who don't feel intrinsically like that's acceptable or that they can have that faith, and they want to understand along the way. And I, and I know that there are some sensitivities, but I, again, it's, it's this push for transparency and inclusion that I think would help a lot more people come along the way for the ride of that intrinsic trust. And I can tell you, while I, I'm, I'm sure people are supportive and that's fine, I'm also hearing from those that are have real concerns and real fears that we should be validating. And one way to help alleviate some of that and allay some of that is to, to include them in some of the decision-making and not the nuance of, of the specific people and, but this just being given this in this moment, for me, doesn't help offset some of that and it doesn't help me allay some of the concerns that, of the constituents that I'm hearing from. So I feel it's important to express my frustration and concern. Again, I, I will try to keep that open mind as we have these discussions over the next, whatever they may be, hour, two hours, 10 minutes. But I, I would hope that we can see some changes in process by, by next year because I don't feel it has to be this frustrating.
Nancy, thank you for the comments. Can everybody, can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for the comments. Look, bottom line, and Brenda, thank you for the presentation. It was very enlightening and, and it was, it was a nice summary of what you've done. Just to be clear, I had not seen the presentation before this meeting as, as well and wasn't familiar with the entire scope of the reorganization. And I want to applaud and commend you and your administration for the work to date and wish you the best of luck on, on the ongoing work. Reorganizations are one of the things I do in my career, and change management is never easy, and really what we're talking about here is, is change management. And to Nancy's point, there's been a lot of discussion in the, in the blogosphere and in social media and in emails regarding individual positions being let go and things of that sort. And that always happens. It happens in every organization that I go into, and we need to reorganize or restructure or eliminate positions or do things in a different way. People always get concerned, and quite frankly, certain reorganizations work out better than other, others. And, and the, the real key to that is to react quickly and to change what's not working and expedite what is working. So over the next year, two years, while this organization is implemented, while your training gets up to date, and while you bring in new people to the organization, I would just encourage you to be nimble and, you know, fail fast and, and move forward. One of the things, and Nancy alluded to it, though I don't think she said this specific department, a lot of the consternation out in the marketplace in, in the citizenry has been over conservation. And I was hoping that maybe you could talk a little bit about conservation because I don't, I don't want to get wrapped up. I'm not in the building, as you've said many times, on a day-to-day basis, so I don't know the effort on a day-to-day basis, who's doing what and what happens there. You're much closer to that than I am, as is your senior team. So what I would ask is, as the general public, and they sit there and say, is this a change in tactic in conservation? Are you not going to do some of the things that they're used to having doing? What are you trying to do in customer service? How do you react to that as it relates specifically to the conservation department, if you don't mind?
Thanks, Tom. And yes, we've all been on those emails, and so I responded to each and every one of them. I've also offered anyone who wants to call me to please call me because I'm happy to have those conversations. I think there's a little bit of a misconception, or like you said, Tom, people saying that we're going, we're doing something, or we're changing the scope of conservation. So to be clear, the conservation department is not going to change as far as their responsibilities. They will be doing everything they were doing before. But it was through the reorganization meeting with our then-director of conservation and with the day-to-day, the day-to-day watching department, and also a lot of feedback from the community, that we could eliminate the conservation administrator position and have the director, the new director, which I believe is going to be amazing, based on search firms that's going to find us, some really awesome candidates, is going to be able to handle that job along with the full-time wetlands compliance officer. And there, if you just look at it internally, right, it, it can be done, and we're going to do it. And so the firm that we brought in, this environmental firm, is to just bridge the gap. And I know I saw some comments that people thought that they were somehow different than what the conservation administrator or director were doing. But this firm is a firm that goes into municipalities all the time that don't have a conservation department. And they handle this permitting, there's a lot of permitting applications that are sitting actually on hold, and they needed to be addressed. They needed to be handled with the conservation commission, and the commission actually saw a lot of turnover as well. As you know, a lot of people resigned from the conservation commission, which, you know, made this a little bit more difficult. And some people said, should we, should have I waited to eliminate this position due to the issues going on in that department? But I, I knew that I could bring this environmental firm in to bridge the gap during the transition because when you put this out in the budget, you have to, according to HR, people who are eliminated in a budget, even though their position does not become eliminated till the budget begins in July, it's not appropriate for a person who knows their job is no longer going to be there to remain in the job. So that's a personnel HR thing, and I took the advice of our HR department, and that's what we did. And that's why we brought the environmental firm in. They are highly respected in regard to environmental firms, and they are working with the conservation commission and the department to make sure that we're managing the things that we have to do. And I'm really looking forward to a new director coming on board as soon as we get some highly qualified candidates. So that's, I know there's that concern, and some people did write, which I don't think is appropriate, that this is somehow going to make it easier for 8-30G applications. Actually, I mean, I, I probably know 8-30G issues better than probably most anyone, serving on the housing committee for nine years. There are a ton of 8-30G applications that, that are approved regardless of inland-wetland issues, and that's another problem with the 8-30G statute, unfortunately. There's a lot of things that need to be changed in it. But no, I, I'm fully committed to making sure that department handles every single thing that it was handling before and at, at an even higher level of detail and, and service to our community. Sure, go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. I'm going to, again, I, I just feel I need to state for the record because I, I hear you saying that you will, you're committed to this, and, you know, what will happen is we'll get into a back and forth because the pushback, and I, and I don't think that's going to move the needle here. But, you know, you're committed to doing something that the people who have been literally and figuratively in the weeds on this work have said that in order to make sure that all of the things that are handled, and it touches so many departments and so many areas, you know, not just 830G, but, you know, our water, our air. I mean, we set the standard for conservation and for sustainability in the state and are continually being recognized for that. And those experts who are day in and day out on that have said, under no uncertain terms can this department work without the structure as provided. They weren't, a lot of the feedback I got was that they weren't consulted on, on how this could work. So, you know, I hear you. I hope some people take to heart what you said, but I, I think that it's, it's raising, you know, you're not answering for some people based on the input and commentary that I've gotten.
Hey, Nancy.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I ask a question just because I want to, I want to get a better understanding? Who are the experts that are saying that to you? And I'm not asking for names, but give me the backgrounds of the, of the experts that are saying that because I, I'm just unaware.
The conservation commission members, sustainability members, activists and advocates on the issue in the community. Even the, the firm that we're going to discuss today has been raised as a concern.
And what's the, what's the, what's the concern with the firm?
That there may be a conflict of interest based on, they used to be with one firm who has interests in our town in terms of development. And again, I am not 100% comfortable. I am not an expert in this area. I just know that I'm listening to the feedback and the input of people who we have relied on, who've been awarded and recommended throughout, and what, what the feedback I'm getting is that this is untenable, the work is as being, as proposed, and the way it was done and, and the, the, the firm that's being hired. And there was even a question about, does the lawyer who was hired, is he in town and does he need to be an elector of this town? And again, part of it is that we're doing this in public executive session, so there isn't an opportunity for, and, and by the way, I think it would be helpful for the public to know where they can find this presentation so that for those people listening, if they wanted to reference it. But, you know, I would want to hear from the public and, and, and be able to evaluate some of the questions and the inbound, specifically because I'm not an expert. So I am relying on, on the, not the, the emails that we all saw and the posts on social media, the phone calls, you know, I had some concerned phone calls over the weekend. And yes, Brenda, I, I.
So, so Nancy, what would, what would make you feel better?
Sorry, I was just, I was allowing.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was just saying, and, and yes, Brenda, Madam First-Electwoman, I do refer them to you. So it's not like I am trying to take this on. I'm just saying collectively, we haven't given the public and the real advocates and the, and the experts, yes, an opportunity. What would make me feel better? An opportunity for the public to weigh in, to really hear from them, and I guess to reinstate that position because while some department heads have said, yeah, we'll try it, and I respect that, nobody connected with the conservation team that I have heard from has said, okay, let's give it a try because we cannot. You know, they're so concerned about not just 830G, but the wetlands. And, and so I don't know that unless we reinstate the position, I can feel better. Unless there is public input, I can feel better, but that may not, you know, so it is.
So, so the wetlands, wetlands.
Yeah. Go ahead. Pertaining to the attorney that has been assisting our conservation department, that attorney has been assisting our conservation department for a long, much longer before this started. So the, we have quite a few additional attorneys that help us in town, that help us with our labor issues in our HR. We have attorneys who assist us with conservation and zoning, appeals, and the attorney that has been assisting our conservation department, has been on, has been helping the town for, since the beginning, since I first, first took office, and it also assists with appeals as well and some zoning issues. So that's not part of this, I just wanted to clarify that. And as far as the environmental firm, I mean, they're, I mean, they were chosen because they're one of the top firms in the state. And I just want to also note that, you know, towns, for example, that are even larger than our cities, Norwalk, for example, that have a lot of conservation areas, you know, this is in line with the staffing levels of other, of other municipalities. So I know some people were writing that I'm diminishing the department in some way, but I, with the online permitting and a very highly qualified conservation director and a full-time wetlands compliance officer, I believe we can get the job done. So I, I just wanted to say that.
So, so here's, yeah, thanks, thanks, yeah. Like I said, I've done this quite a bit in my professional life, and, and I'm not involved in the day-to-day management or staffing of this department, obviously, nor is Nancy. I'm trying to get to a point where, and change, change is hard, uncertainty is hard. People feel very passionate about issues, they don't want them missed, they feel very passionately about people that they've developed good relationships with. So I get all that. I'm trying to get to a point where we can evaluate this, not for the decision itself, but for how's it going. So what I would recommend is that we develop a set of metrics that we want tracked and that it gets reported back out through the conservation commissioner, what have you, to our board, maybe on a quarterly basis to show what's gone on with the conservation department over that period of time. And the reason I say report it out to our board isn't so much so that we can micromanage it, because I don't think that's appropriate, but so that we can, so that it gets a public airing, much to Nancy's point. And that's the way you can tell whether that reorganization has improved the level of service, improved the efficiency, or if not. And that's the way that you can guarantee that there's appropriate action taken. But I think the jump to conclusions on, because of personnel issues and because of reorganizations, where truly, you would never change anything then. You would never change anything. You would just continue to do everything that you do. Uh, you would just continue to do everything that you do. Um, and what would we expect different results? Everybody knows what, that doesn't happen. So I think, um, it was time for a reorganization. I think there's a potential for even better service here. Uh, Nancy, I don't know this environmental firm, right? So I don't know, um, what this conflict of interest is, but I'm sure that can be addressed. Um, but, but I think it's important that we try it, we report out on it, uh, we see good, bad, and different, and we course correct in the middle of it, or the administration course correct it should it be required. And that's what I'd say.
Thank you, Tom, go ahead Nancy.
Um, thank you. I, I wanna say respectfully that, um, and by the way, I, we all call each other by our first names. I want everyone to know we all respect each other, so I'm just gonna continue, Tom. Um, respectfully, um, what I will say is those metric reports, you know, memory is short. We, we've called on that a lot, and I've heard it used a lot, like, oh, people are gonna report in. And that's not always an effective mechanism because it doesn't happen often. And while that may be a change that the first, that Brenda, you hope to, um, instill moving forward, and I would welcome that because I do think that there are a lot of jobs we said, oh, we'll look back at a year and decide, and a year later, some of that hasn't happened. So I have a concern with that as a sort of tool, um.
Well, then that's on us.
Yeah, and, and, and fine, and, you know, that may be, but as, as something that's reassuring, it doesn't, I don't know that it's gonna provide the reassurance that people are looking for. Um, and again, we set the standard. We are different from Norwalk because we have set the standard for, for environmental, um, activity and sustainability, and I refer to the Salt Marsh Restoration Program and the Open Space Program. Someone brought up a concern that, um, the gentleman who manages the Open Space Program is now reporting into DPW. And maybe Mr. Baldwin can, um, respond to that, but this gentleman asserts that that is not, um, appropriate, and it's against the charter. So, again, um, I would, would like to know that answer so I can at least reassure one constituent. But, um, again, I think that part of the, the concern, and, and maybe there will be an opportunity when the Board of Finance, um, brings up these issues, uh, to talk about some of this in the light of, of public, in light of public comment and with public comment. Um, so for me, I'm just not going to be able to make an informed decision based on this new information. So, you know, I, again, I, I'm trying to keep an open mind, but it, it's hard. So, um, it does not sound at all like there's an appetite for me to, um, even move to try to reinstate that position. But I would leave this on the record for my colleagues down the line to really hear from the experts in conservation, to hear public comment, to hear from the commission, to better understand what this reorganization will mean specifically for conservation. And, and Tom, I don't dispute what you're saying, change is hard, and difficult decisions have to be made. Um, and then I have a slight, well, it's off the record of, off the subject of conservation. Um, but, uh, so I'll, I'll put a period on, on this commentary for now, and then as we move on. I, I just have a question about, uh, the presentation just now.
I, I'm good Nancy, if, if the First Select Woman is, is okay, please. And, and to your point about our first names and all that, I've always been a little bit informal. So my apologies, but obviously you both have my deepest respect, so. Um, and I think that's the tone and tenor of our board and has been since we've been elected, so.
Thank you, yes. Um, I just, I'm, I'm, again, in, in going through my, my notes about, um, what I, what I heard in the, what I heard in the presentation this morning was an understanding of some of the, the savings. Um, but I think it's important for the public to hear some of the acknowledgement, certainly, of the costs of, of the layoffs, of the Veri plan. Um, because I think it's important, again, for people to make an informed opinion and to, to have a better understanding of what the full implication is. Um, and again, not because it's for or against, but just to understand the facts. Because as I said, so much of what I've learned over the last two years in terms of this budget, the last three and a half with, including my time on the RTM, is so much of this is in nuance, in the weeds, in the details that we don't often discuss. And, uh, I think that, you know, again, memory is short. So, um, some of, just acknowledging some of these costs would make people feel like we're not hiding anything, but, you know, it's part of a, a bigger, fuller picture. So, Brenda, if you could, talk about that.
So on page ten, Nancy.
Yeah.
I did outline that, you know, we have a six hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars, uh, savings, but it was offset by seventy-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars in reorganization-related costs.
And then in terms of, um, yeah, and, and just the long-term implications, you know, that this is something, um, that, you know, we're gonna have to talk about again down the line. where, is this, is this presentation as of right now available to the public?
Yeah, we're, excuse me, like I said, we had just finished it, late Friday night. Um, and, and trying to get the newsletter all at once, so, so, a lot's happening here Friday. Um, yes, we're gonna post this, um, on, on the website.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll, I'll be sending it to the Board of Finance prior to their, uh, I will be making my budget presentation on Thursday night before the Board of Finance. And I've asked the chairman to also, uh, have the opportunity to be able to go through this with them right after I do the budget presentation.
And, um, the one thing I would say is, you know, I, I think that people do really value and appreciate your Friday newsletter, and there's a lot of really good information there. Um, and so thank you for communicating in that way. I would also offer that the Board of Selectmen is another vehicle where we have an opportunity to discuss some of the things in your letter because that isn't, um, an official meeting where people have an opportunity to comment in the light of day, where we have an opportunity, Tom and I, to, to comment in the light of day on issues germane to, not just bu, the budget, but, you know, kind of the executive, um, functioning of this board. So I, I would offer in the same way that I, I hope some of this budget discussion looks different in 2022, um, based on some of the things we've talked about. I would also offer that, um, you know, to, to use those meetings in a way that, that helps with some of the communication efforts and advance the communication efforts so that, in part, when we come here a year from now, we, we have talked about some of those things through that mechanism of the Board of Selectmen, so. Um, and, and then Mr., through you, Madam First Select Woman, if the town attorney could address, um, the issue of the Open Space Program Director reporting into DPW, doesn't have to be now, but I think it would be important as the Board of Finance gets, gets the budget, um, to, to understand that because that was a concern, so. Um, I assume we'll have an opportunity to.
Yeah, I'm sorry Nancy, I didn't mean to interrupt. When you say open space director, do you mean the conservation staff? Uh, they're like DPW, uh, they go out and clean the recreational areas and the conservation areas?
And I don't wanna say the gentleman's, well, what was told to me, and again, I don't know the answer. So the person who manages the Open Space Program is how it was put. And offline, I'm happy to say the gentleman's name, I just, he's not in the room, so I don't wanna say his name, but, um, supposedly, supposedly it's, it's put in as a report into the DPW. Um, which is not supposed to be.
So currently, so how the Conservation, uh, Department works is there are, uh, staff that are very similar to DPW staff, um, and they go and, uh, clean brush or, uh, work on, on Lake Mohegan, for example, and, uh, different trails and conservation areas, um, in our town. So while we don't have a director right now, they, there was actually years ago, um, a move or a push many years ago to move those, um, staff members under the umbrella of DPW because they do the similar work, and sometimes they're slower at, at times of year, and they could hunch into DPW. We're gonna look at that over the next year. But in, in light of the fact that our director is not there, um, yes, they are reporting to DPW. Because DPW is reviewing, I mean, they are in charge of all of our areas that need work, that need tree trimming and, and, uh, conservation areas and all of that. So that's just a temporary thing for now. I can't hear you Nancy, are you on?
Sorry, yeah, sorry. When someone asserts something is illegal and against charter, that is a real assertion. And so I think it's important to be addressed, so, um.
Well, I'll have the town attorney look into that, I don't know that it would be illegal, but.
Yeah, I mean, and I certainly can't speak to it. Um, and if we have a, is there a moment that is more?
I do know, hey, I do know, just to, to Nancy's point, as it relates to some of the labor work that was done. Um, I do know this came up at the Board of Finance several years ago, and it was one of the quote-unquote justifications for the, the larger Conservation Commission, uh, was that in other towns, a certain work was being handled by DPW. And in, in Fairfield, for some reason, uh, certain things in terms of, um, maintenance of, of certain lands and stuff was falling under conservation. So i- if, if that holds true, and that came from Mr. Carey, if that holds true, uh, that other towns were actually doing it under DPW, and it was just a, an alignment of responsibilities, uh, I can't imagine that it's illegal to have it under DPW, um, uh, here, um, or reassigned under DPW if that's the case. I, I just bring that up as context because I do remember those conversations being had previously.
So I, I don't have, you know, further comments on this front. I assume we'll have an opportunity down the line when, um, we get more into the specific, uh, in the case of, for instance, the, the consultancy, this consultant group. But, specific to your presentation, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there anything further on this, um, on the presentation?
Not from me, thank you very much for, for, and walking us through it.
No further comments at this time.
Thank you. All right, so we're back to, um, item number five. Uh, we have a motion, a motion to approve, this is obviously the budget. Um, so I'm gonna open that up for questions.
Madam First Select Woman, I have some, uh, adjustments to discuss on the budget, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So the first one, uh, goes to, uh, golf fees at Smith Richardson, uh, uh, page eighteen. And I'd like to thank Mr. Calabrese for getting back to me relative to some of my questions on this, as well as with, uh, we had a little bit of a negotiation, uh, and are in agreement. And, and what led to this was the fact that I, um, the approval of the clubhouse a couple of years ago had come with an expectation of increased revenues in the golf, uh, area. Uh, and I had not seen that, uh, reflected in the budget. And called that out, and, and there was subsequent information provided. And due to the pandemic and some of the items, well, uh, Mr. Calabrese has, uh, some issue with going to the full level that was expected in the clubhouse authorization. He did, uh, bring up the levels, uh, in concert with me. So I'd like to propose that we raise revenue in about, um, seven different accounts, uh, or rather, that I'll, I'll just give the revenue amounts, uh, for the accounts that I would be comfortable with. This would be on page eighteen, and there are accounts of forty-two, four sixty-seven versus forty-two, four seventy-seven are the numbers that I'm, are the accounts I'm looking at. Uh, season passes.
Sorry, sorry, go slow, it's just all under this, on this one page?
Oh, sorry, yes, it's all on this one page, Nancy. Page eighteen, bottom of the page, recreation, Smith Richardson Golf Course. Uh, the projection is on the right-hand side. Um, so my motion would be to raise season passes to sixty-five thousand dollars, raise IDs to two hundred thousand dollars, uh, lockers to seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, green fees at one million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, driving range at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, carts at three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and concessions at sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the net impact of that on revenue would be to raise revenue, um, about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It's actually, uh, two hundred and fifteen thousand, hang on. Uh, I'm looking for the exact amount. Uh, two hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars over the budget that is before us, and that is my motion on those line items.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Is there a discussion?
Well, there is, because.
I've asked, excuse me Nancy, I've asked Anthony to sign in, he's trying now, um, so he can address any of these if you have questions, uh, but you wanna go ahead?
I, sorry, now for Ms. Anthony or for, for Tom? Hello, Anthony, thanks for jumping on. I was going to add to, I guess, reiterate what you had mentioned, you spoke to Anthony, Tom.
I did.
Does this feel realizable and, um, you know, because I see that this addition to revenue perhaps brings us an opportunity in other areas. So, um, Anthony, are you comfortable with revenues raised here?
Yeah, as Mr. Flynn stated, I did speak to him this morning, and I'm comfortable with these numbers.
And I am supportive.
Thank you, Mr. Calabrese, by the way, for your efforts this morning on quick notice.
No problem at all?
I have no further questions.
Okay. Is there anything further from, uh, Mr. Flynn, from you, on this?
Not, not on this item, no.
So you, are, are you making a motion?
I did, and Nancy seconded it, so now it's her vote.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Calabrese. Uh, the next item, oh, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, because.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, the next item I have is in the town clerk's area, uh, account number forty-two, three, twelve, which is conveyance tax. Uh, it currently sits at one million, eight seventy-five.
Sorry.
Nineteen, nineteen, sorry about that. It currently sits at one million, eight seventy-five. Uh, I'd like to raise that number based on current, uh, projections for this year as well as, uh, the holdover in the next year and talking with my real estate colleagues. Uh, I'd like to raise this number by a hundred thousand dollars. So I'd like to make a motion to raise that line item by a hundred thousand dollars, so the total would be one million, nine seventy-five, uh, thousand. I did not speak to Mrs. Brown about this. Um, I, it's, we're significantly over this this year, and I think, uh, with what's going on in real estate, this is gonna continue as well as with the increase in the revaluation, which she already said it didn't take into account. So I feel comfortable making this motion based on my past history with the account. And that's.
I have, uh, Betsy Brown on the line. Betsy, would you like to, uh, address this?
Sure, I'm just pulling up where we are as of last week.
Hey Bets, I'll remind you, you still owe me lunch from this year.
This year was an anomaly. Uh, right now, as of close of business on Friday, we are at two point three four million dollars. Uh, again, my concern is just with the inventory. And I had provided information.
Yeah.
That I think you all have.
Yeah, thank you. I, I still stand by my motion. Do I have a second? Do we have a second on that?
Oh, go ahead.
I'll second it, but then I would love to continue the discussion, I second the motion.
So Betsy, can you talk a little bit about your concern about the lack of inventory?
Yeah, it's just that, uh, right now, last year at this, end of January, twenty twenty, there were over four hundred units on the market, and right now, there's a little over two hundred. And being that, you know, we have seen the flurry of activity due to people, you know, moving from the cities here, I just don't know that that's going to keep up for next year, if we're even gonna see that this summer.
So on that score, we're not going to two point three million, which is likely to be closer to two point five. So on that score, we're not going to two point three million, which is likely to be closer to two point five. We're going from one point eight to one point nine. And in addition, we have the higher values of these homes, which will create a higher percentage, or rather, a higher dollar volume. So even though your units will be less, your dollar volume will be higher, higher. And I'm not raising it, to your point, Bets, this year was an anomaly. We're not going to get to the same level of this year, partially based on inventory. You're absolutely correct, and I agree with you.
Nancy, do you have any questions?
Um, would it feel more comfortable if if we did it half? Or is it just sort of any increase to this line item, Betsy, that makes you feel uncomfortable? Because I'm inclined to sort of, I I'd rather err on the side of of caution. But if you have any appetite for for wiggling this, or if you're sort of like, okay, bye. I don't have a real sense, and I defer to you as the.
It's just that when, you know, when I submit the budget, you know, it's based, it's in early fall. We don't have a lot of activity to really go off of.
Right.
So.
So what is your sense, Betsy?
Uncomfortable keeping it under two million.
So then that.
As always, the Board of Finance can look at it, too.
Right. And my adjustment is keeps it under two million. It keeps just one, nine, seven, five, oh. Thank you, Betsy, for your comments, by the way.
Because the market's going to adjust, it's going to adjust itself at some point. We just don't.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, given that it's under that that two million threshold, I am also ready. I have no further questions.
Okay, and I think it can be adjusted throughout the process to.
Exactly.
You know, if we're not hitting that. All right. Well, if Betsy feels comfortable with the under two and the board feels comfortable with the motion, I'm going to call for a vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Oh, sorry, aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Flynn, do you have additional?
I do, actually. If we go to first select woman's office, part-time payroll. Sorry, Nancy. I'm going to make a motion. There was just an error. I'm going to make a motion that we reduce the select person's salary in this budget from twenty-four, four oh two to twenty-four thousand flat. It's a grand total, huge adjustment of four hundred and two dollars, but I'm going to make that motion.
And I'm going to second it.
And just to explain for the public substance, there was a clerical error in the budget. And there was a clerical error in payroll, and it was slightly overpaying the selectmen. So we were, we rectified that issue, and now we are, this motion will rectify it in the budget.
I'm sure there are a lot of jokes we could make about this, but I would never joke at the expense of town payers' dollars, so.
There's no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And just so you know, Jared is obviously in the room and keeping track of all of the changes.
I don't want to, I don't want to keep going if Nancy has something that she wants to discuss, but I do have other, other comments, questions, adjustments.
If you have further revenue adjustments, keep going because you're only justifying my ability to make the changes that I'd like to propose.
I have nothing on revenue. I do have a couple on expenses. If we would turn to the, this is Betsy Brown time, we're turning to the town clerk's office, and we talked about this.
Number please.
Sure, it's page forty-nine. And it's just for consistency, Betsy was kind enough to say that they were awaiting information from the state relative to the fall elections. And that there was money put in here with the assumption that they would have to do things virtually, need more printing, need more overtime, need more postage. In the past, such items, particularly as it came to either the registrar of voter or the town clerk, were put into contingency. Why was that done? So that it didn't just become part of the budget as a whole for that department moving forward. And so that money wasn't inadvertently spent out of that budget for other purposes relative to those three line items, but still other purposes. So if I look, it's a, it's a transfer of this amount from the town clerk's office to contingency. And for the overtime account, which would be five, one, zero, five, oh, it would be three grand. For the printing account, it would be five, six, one, zero, zero, the account number would be twelve grand. And for the postage account, which is five, six, one, five, oh, it would be six grand for a grand total of transferring twenty-one thousand dollars from the town clerk's department to the contingency line to be utilized for these purposes. Should the state come back and say that, whatever they do on the election for the fall. And that's my motion.
So can you clarify your motion?
It's to move, it's to move, yeah, it's to move these amounts from the town clerk's budget proper from that department and to put it into the general contingency account to be earmarked and utilized for these items. Should the state come back and and provide more guidance on the fall elections that would require these items to be spent.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, let's open this up for discussion. Betsy, would you like to comment?
Tom is correct that this had happened in the past with the registrar voter's office, particularly when we've had primaries. And I do appreciate that you're not taking the entire increase because I do.
Right.
These lines to be increased for operational purposes. That's just our day to day.
Right.
And just to be clear, I don't have to go to the Board of Finance to get this transfer, correct? It would just, it would be automatic that should these line, this money need to be put back.
I think they have to, Bets, I think in fairness, I think they have to sign off on it. But the reality is, my motion earmarks it for you and says that it's specifically set aside for this purpose. And you would go before them and just say, here, here's what came down, you know, from the state. You know, these monies were put aside for the, by the Board of Selectmen, and I can't imagine.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that it's a transfer, not a new appropriation.
That's correct. That's a hundred percent correct.
But may I, it's my understanding that you really technically cannot earmark funds in that way? Am I?
We, we can state exact, no, we can state exactly what it's there for, Nancy.
Stating is different than earmarking.
Right. Why can't we earmark it? That's, I mean, that's what we've done in the past. It was an understanding.
You know, respectfully, and having just come off the, one of the most historic elections in our time. I'm nervous that if if this is something that we may need, we should account for it where it is. Whether we talk about a possible reduction in that maybe, but to put it into contingency, it's like we either think we need it or we don't, but because we can't really earmark things.
Would rather reduce it.
I I'm not saying that. I'm saying it's worth the discussion and to hear more from Betsy. Because I think that, again, I'd rather probably not reduce it, understanding the world we're living in, understanding that we just came off of, as I said, one of the most historic elections in our time, and understanding the importance of that. And I would say that that for twenty-one thousand dollars, it's probably not the area. It it doesn't feel like the right time. Betsy, I'm happy to hear otherwise, but this to me feels like not the right move.
Well, so far, the guidance that we've received from the state of Connecticut is that COVID nineteen, unlike for the past election, cannot be used as an excuse for an absentee ballot. It would be, you know, like fear of COVID, it would be an underlying medical condition only. So we just don't know if this guidance is going to change, you know, if there's enough vaccinations in people's arms. It, we could just be operating business as usual. It's just right now, the only guidance we have brings us through any type of special election through May. And our budget is past the beginning of May, and it's just, I would rather be safe than sorry.
And for me, too, I I would, I I just, I'm not totally comfortable with this idea. And again, no judgment on where the Board of Finance will sit on this. I just think that in this case, it it's like one more layer of having to get approval on something when it's already sitting where it may need to be. So I would rather, for me, my level of comfort in this area is to keep it as it is. And since we don't know more, and we have just come off of everyone's favorite word out of, we're we're sort of evolving out of unprecedented times. This is a twenty-one thousand dollar contingency I'd rather not bank on. I'd rather have this sort of, for me.
So thank you, Nancy. So Tom, what is, what is the reasoning to change it and put it in contingency as opposed to just leaving it where it is? And then it could potentially be moved later, should it need to be?
This is no offense to Betsy, so please don't take it as to to a comment about Betsy. But in the past, we've put funds like this into departmental budgets only to find out that the event that was originally quote unquote budgeted for did not happen. But those funds were expended anyway on other items. Because once they're put into the department budget, they're available to be spent for whatever purpose is there relative to the area. We've had this as well in building, building committees, where we've put funds into building committees. And building committees have changed the scope of their work and throughout their process and tried to spend those funds. So this is another layer of saying, you know what, if we're going to have a historic election or we're going to have an election that's going to cost more money, we want to make sure that money is put aside only for that purpose. And again, please, that is not about Betsy in any way, shape or form. It's just if it's good for the other department heads, it should be consistently applied across the entity. That's why. Once it's here, it can be spent for that reason without, without that election being any different.
Nancy, do you have any further comments?
I I don't. I'm ready. I do, actually, I have a comment not, sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't. Sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry.
Oh, good question.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I meant to mute myself as I sneezed. No.
You're allowed to, you're allowed to sneeze.
I, just to say, I was ready to, for me to take it to a vote.
So Betsy, I understand your point here, and I I get what you're saying.
Yes.
But we do have an election coming up, and there's a lot going on. And I I trust Betsy to not expend the funds in a way that are inappropriate. And so I'm going to, I'm going to err on the side of allowing Betsy to have those funds there. I know it can be frustrating now to go through the Board of Finance for every little thing. And it it does impede our accountability and movement away. But I understand your point of view and and other items. I may be with you. But I think, you know, I think I was, I'm going to err on listening, taking the advice of Betsy and not, not, not moving these funds to contingency.
It's fine.
Okay, so do you want to withdraw your motion?
No, let's, let's vote on it, and I I'm ready to vote on it. That's fine. Things fail. It's, it is what it is.
Well, just give me a chance. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails. Okay, Nancy, do you have any more, Tom? Do you have some more?
I've got a question. If we, it was in a part, department that we didn't review. Can I, and it's a nit, but it's, it was, it was nibbling at me. Page fifty-seven, Registrar of Voters. Social Security Contribution, why did that go up when all the other payroll lines and everything else went down or stayed the same?
One minute, Tom.
Yeah. And again, it's not a big amount, but I'm just, it's cleanup.
This was, um, I see what you're saying, and I I do see the difference. We did rerun the the numbers for the current, or for next year's budget, and this is the right amount for this year. So I can't speak to what happened in the, in the current year budget.
Uh, so you think there was an error in the current year budget?
But there were, we did rerun it for this year, and this is the right amount.
Okay, then I'll let it go. Thanks. Hey, Jared, while you're up there, you had, you had indicated that the OPEB number that you provided last week was a preliminary number. Can you talk about next steps on that?
Sure, I contacted the actuary, and they're still, they're still working on finalizing the evaluation.
Yep.
They have indicated that the week of the fifteenth, sometime between the fifteenth and the twentieth, they will have, of March, they'll have a final, final number for us.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Don't expect it to change a whole lot.
Right, so you're, you're comfortable with the number you have that's based on best available information. But the other town bodies might get a better update and need to adjust the budget accordingly as we go through the process.
Right.
Thank you. The last item I'll bring up for now relates to the conversations I've had over the weekend from town officials from other towns. As we recall, there's a very fluid situation between the state, with the state and the federal government on COVID relief funds. And the federal government's been acting over the last week to to approve funds. And some of those funds are going right to states, right to municipalities, and right to counties. While the, while the information is is preliminary at this point, the understanding is there's, there's a significant amount of funds that will flow back to towns, including Fairfield, as well as Boards of Education specifically to help with the COVID-related expenses that had been expended in other years. So I think as we continue our our discussions and and more importantly, as other town bodies continue their deliberations over the next couple of months, I I would encourage everybody to be up to speed on what's going on at that level so they can act accordingly relative to the budgets to funds that become available. That could help us, my understanding is those funds could be spread over two years even, and this would also impact other areas of the budget. I think maybe the Board of Ed or maybe Mr. Cummings has more information. And and Madam, first select woman, maybe you want to speak to this. But I think that's very interesting and represents an opportunity for additional changes to the budget or comfort with this budget as it moves through the other town bodies. The the information is just too fluid right now. So I don't know, Brenda, if you have anything you'd like to say.
So yes, I read these same articles you did. And we're also doing some research on our own and speaking to other towns. Obviously, there's going to be some money coming in. We just don't know the exact amount and what the parameters are of of those monies. And I know the education system will be getting additional funds as well. And there's supposed to be some money flowing toward us. I'm assuming we're going to know more about this when the Board of Finance is looking at this over the next month. And so hopefully, we'll be able to have greater detail to be able to go off of for for a debt as they review the budget. Go ahead, Nancy.
It was back to what, Tom, you were talking about with the registrar voters and some of the other departments that we didn't have a chance to talk about. If I could go circle back to that, and also when Jared was up there, someone who has a lot of Akina, I just noticed a very little typo on page three. And so I just thought it was in case nobody caught it, or if, I I myself didn't do the math. But it's on on the line item on page three under, it's the property of available for assessment. It's listed at four seventy-three, nine oh three, and so on. Apparently, it's four ninety-three, oh, one, five, two, six, five. I encourage you to check the math, but just someone noticed a tiny little typo there, which changed the four point two pers, two, five to four point four, two. I can't verify it. It was brought to my attention, so I thought worth noting. That was just a small thing. I can't verify it. It was brought to my attention, so I thought worth noting. That was just a small thing. Um, but then wanted to bring up this idea of the other departments, um, that we didn't discuss. And one thing, um, and I, I think it goes back to, uh, the conversation I was having at a more philosophical level when we first began, that so much of the discussion is in the nuance and in the weeds. And if, if involving the Board of Selectmen earlier in the process, we could have some of these informed discussions. For instance, one of the big increases this year was in not-for-profits. And I'm not suggesting that we do or don't, um, fund them the way it's suggested in the, in the budget, but certainly it's an area where we should look at. But not having had the opportunity to, to hear from them and have input and public comment, it's very, very hard for me to make an informed decision that that's the right place, um, to cut. And so, um, I do know that there are big, you know, bigger increases there. Um, so again, more for the record for my colleagues who get the budget next round, when they do have those detailed discussions with each department. I think that's, that's an area where we could look at. Um, I certainly would like to talk about the education line item. But, um, given Mr. Flynn, that you have offered a few opportunities for revenue increase, an increase to revenue, um, I'm going to give it the college try and, uh, make a motion to reinstate the full-time administrator position in the Conservation Department.
Can you be more specific? The admin or the conservation administrator?
The conservation administrator. The position that was just eliminated. I'm going to, um, ask that it be reinstated.
You're making a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? I can't hear you, Tom. You're, uh, must be on.
Sorry about that. I will, uh, I, in, to be collegial, uh, I will second it for discussion purposes. Uh, only I do not support the motion at this point in time.
Okay.
I'm willing to hear the discussion about it.
May I?
Sure, absolutely. Go ahead.
I think, um, where there are opportunities for other, um, adjustments in terms of expenditures, I've just mentioned a few in terms of the not-for-profits as a possibility to look at. Some of the contingency possibilities to look at. I, I, um, and again, I can't make, absolute line-by-line opportunities, but I'm offering a few here. Um, I do think that the experts, uh, that we rely on, who've brought us to this place in an area of excellence in environmental conservation, sustainability, they have all advocated for that. So it's on their behalf that I'm, I'm trying to advocate it for, advocate for it here. And I just think it's important to go on record to note, um, and so that's why I was, as I said, giving it the college try. Thus my motion.
Well, I, I respect that Nancy, um, and I understand, um, however, I, I just want to be clear that again, this is part of a broader reorganization and there was a tremendous amount of, uh, review and time spent making the decisions that are made for the reorganization. And so, um, again, I'm always happy to talk to anyone about these items. But I do believe, um, this isn't a matter of just reducing some costs and other items to fund it. It, it's not simply about dollars and cents. It's about, uh, in my opinion, um, you know, efficiencies and making sure that we are, you know, each employee that works in every single department is, um, earning the entire salary they're receiving for a full day's work. And so it's, it's, um, it's more about reorganization than it is about dollars and cents.
And, um, I'm happy to hear you say that because I agree that there is more that goes into these decisions than dollars and cents. I couldn't agree more. And, um, well, you know, I'll leave it at that. I think we've kind of discussed, we, we've had the discussion. So for me, I'd be ready to put it to a vote and I understand and, and, you know, appreciate your point of view, although I don't share it.
So, um, just before we go to the vote, if you don't mind, um, you know, fear is a strong motivator to maintain the status quo. And the only thing you know is if you continue to do the same thing, you continue to just get the same result. I think this and other reorganizations, my professional experience tells me that it's an opportunity, an opportunity that doesn't come without some risk, um, but that I think given, um, where we are and, you know, my commentary, whether it be to the Board of Education or to town government in general over the last 18 years, has always been we've have to try new things. We need to evolve. We need to create. We need to take advantage of new technologies. We need to innovate. Uh, we need to become a 21st century town, uh, in order to move forward. And with that in mind and not knowing the particulars of the day-to-day operation of, of the department, that is Brenda's responsibility, uh, I support her efforts to reorganize town government and take those opportunities to see what we can do efficiently and, uh, more effectively. So I'm going to support, uh, her on this position as well as her entire reorganization, uh, so that we can move the town forward.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion on this item, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Aye.
The motion, uh, fails, uh, two to one.
Nancy, I want to thank you for the motion and for the discussion.
Thank you. Thank you for considering it. Um, I also wanted, if I may, uh, Brenda, make a comment to something Tom had said about, um, reading the articles and you had conferred, if I may, so expenses. Um, I, I just want to be clear that it's my understanding with any funds that the Board of Education may receive that they're not to address operational issues, um, but they're to address things like learning loss, remote learning, the social emotional supports of our kids. Um, and so, you know, operationally will, will still be, the Board of Ed will still be in the position that they're in. And I want to remind people, and I think this goes really across the board and, and it's something we've alluded to. You know, we tend to have a short memory and when we're having an honest discussion about this budget, both on the operating side and on the Board of Ed side, I think it's important to remember that in some ways, um, and in different ways, Tom, you and I have talked about this throughout, um, things come due. And so, um, I just want to remind people that there are decisions that we have to make regarding this budget that, um, factor in things like a 2.2 agreed-upon carryover from last year on the Board of Ed side. I know that, that, that there are similar carryovers from last year on the town side. Um, but I think it's really important that we don't sweep those things under the rug when we talk about this because we're not being fair or honest with, with the people who are paying their taxes with the residents. So, um, when we do have an opportunity to talk about, about the Board of Ed specifically, I think it's important to keep those, that, that in mind.
Thank you. Um, are there any other discussions on, um, any item in the budget or?
Yeah, um.
Um, one thing that I, I think is important, um, we had the discussion during the budget presentation process uh, with the Board of Education Superintendent regarding the healthcare, uh, account. And I had brought up that we believe that there was, um, savings going to be achieved there because the number was, um, not accurate, or did they, it was, the budget book was put together for the Board of Ed prior to them getting the additional information. And so, uh, Doreen Mansell was kind enough to, uh, share with me that there is savings in that $3 million line of, uh, approximately $500,000. And so, um, it, it's my understanding, I, I don't have to reduce our, uh, reduction amount in the budget of $2 million. But that when the budget goes through the process, through us, through the Board of Finance and through the RTM, when it goes back to the Board of Ed for the adjustment, they will have that saving. So that will result in the $2 million reduction in my proposed budget to really, uh, being only a $1.5 million reduction. So I just wanted to note that. And I did speak to Mr. Cummings, um, over the weekend and, uh, that is the understanding of everyone. And I see, uh, Ms. Mansell is on the line, but they are, uh, receiving the $500,000, they, uh, adjustment, let's just say, to that healthcare account, based on what they received from the state on that. So I just wanted to note that, uh, for the board. And the, I did read quite a few articles regarding, um, these funds. And you're right Nancy, it's, uh, social emotional support, social workers, you know, they were saying things like, um, school administration shouldn't be adding FTEs, uh, but rather, uh, you know, additional social, um, services, additional, uh, guidance people, but in a part-time sort of temporary basis while those funds are allowed to be used, as opposed to putting in full-time positions that will then have to be funded for years and years into the future. But yes, um, I was happy to see those funds going to be coming because that is a very important part in, in the social emotional, uh, issues. And, and the catch-up, I read about, it's also for catch-ups, which I would assume, and we could talk more about, well, I'm sure the Board of Education will have more discussions that any of us on the Board of Selectmen can listen into. But I think they will be, uh, implementing those funds to assist with students who lost, uh, learning uh, over the past year, which we know is, is a real issue, uh, heard from, God, hundreds of parents, uh, since this all started. So I'm hoping that we'll hear more about that when that comes up. Go ahead Nancy.
Um, with that, I would like to give this another college try, understanding that there will be, you know, a small offset here potentially and, um, maybe not ask, make a motion for as, as, um, as robust as some would like. But I'd like to make a motion of, um, putting back in $500,000 to the Board of Education budget to, um, bring then that reduction to a million, um, rather than, you know, to, to try to meet that 50%. So the motion is to add $500,000 back into the Board of Education line item.
And to be clear, is that 500 on top of the 500 reduction they're going to have? So that would bring it down to only a million dollar reduction?
Correct.
Actually, the way this works though is in the budget, it would stay a $1.5 million reduction.
Right, but I'm thinking.
Understood. I'll second your motion for discussion purposes.
I, I.
Uh, so, uh, Nancy, where would you see that 500,000 coming from in the budget? What other line item would we have to take away from to do that?
Yeah, and I think that that's, you know, here lies the, the rub and Tom just gave us $300,000. Um, I think nothing should be off the table and I'm absolutely happy to, to go through. I mean, I'd like to look at things like we spend a lot of money on lawyer fees, um, surplus and fund balance, uh, contingency. Again, those not-for-profits and, and I'm happy to look through those things if this, um, is something that we really want to weigh very seriously, um, because I do think, again, as you just stated, that it's more than just the dollars and cents, um, especially coming off the year we've, we've come off of and, and investing in the students in the future. You know, and I listened to everything on, on all sides of the argument about, you know, the numbers are declining. But the truth is, if you really look at the numbers, we're educating more high school students as we go and that's more expensive to educate. So there's so many things that go into this and I think especially in a year where we don't know how much we're going to get from the state, um, investing in the social emotional well-being of the kids is, and, and our clean air. For me, those are the, the kind of, as you said, Tom, the non-starters. So.
Can I, can, yeah. So a couple of things, uh, the emotional and social well-being caused by the pandemic, we already know we're getting money from. Same thing I would assume with the clean air. We'll get money back from that. So those two items, though I understand the concern about them, I think they're going to be covered by this funding that'll be coming back to the town. The second item I would say is, well, we talk about the fact that high school students are more expensive to educate and I understand that. Um, it's a 9% decline in overall enrollment over the last 10 years with a 20, 27% to 28% increase in spending. That's a lot more expensive if that's truly the case, uh, to educate the high school students. I don't think that argument from that percentage is, is exactly accurate. The third item, which is really, um, kind of the crux of the budget. It's been interesting because I, Nancy, you brought up, and I think it's a valid discussion to have. Uh, you brought up the fund balance. You didn't bring up OPEB. I'll throw OPEB in there. Basically, the financial cliffs that were developed last year, uh, ba, based on the work that the Board of Finance did with the RTM after it left this table. Let's refresh everybody's memory. Last year, it left our table before the pandemic. The pandemic hit and then the other town bodies got together and decided to look at the budget and reduce it to give the taxpayers a break because of what was going on economically. Now, I give them all the credit in the world for doing that. They worked with the administration. It was required the taxpayers needed a break to come in at that zero. But truthfully, what they did is they didn't cut a lot in, in expenses. They cut a lot in funding. They didn't fund expenses that had already been incurred based on contracts that had been signed by the previous administrations as well as been ratified by previous RTMs. And they decided to take really a funding holiday, um, from funding things such as, uh, OPEB, which is based on prior contracts, funding things like a contingency reserve for unsettled contracts. Now, the problem with that is, what happened in the subsequent is, uh, the teachers' contracts settled with, with increases over the next three years of over 8% um, in salary. That puts us at a bargaining disadvantage with the unions on the town side. So you need to establish a reserve on the town side for potential salary increases on the town side union contracts moving forward, which is what this contingency does. So you have OPEB, you have the contingency, and then let's talk about fund balance. Fund balance, we've established a number of years ago to stay between 10 and 15% of the overall budget of the, of the town. Why do we do that? Because it gives us a AAA credit rating. Why is that important? Because it gives us lower borrowing costs. In a timeframe over the next 10 years, where we're estimating that we need to budget to spend over $300 million on investment in infrastructure, both on the town side, the Board of Education side and another wastewater treatment plant, it'd be very, very expensive to lose that AAA credit rating and have our interest rates go up. So I wouldn't mess too much with the fund balance. And when it's been put back into the fund balance this year is an amount to keep us at that 11-point something percent, 11.4 or something percent of the overall budget. Those are three items, along with a couple of other items such as pension costs and one or two others that equate to $7.9 million in funding that is truly funding, not increases in expense. You add that together with the Board of Education recommended increase by the First Select Woman of 7.5 million. That's 15.4 million of new funding, spending year over year. Now, that's spending, not expense. Then you add what the Board of Selectmen, or rather what the First Select Woman is recommending on the town side, it, which is about two, little over 2 million, maybe 2.9 million if you round it up, which is about 2.4, 2.5% spending increase on her side. While the Board of Education is getting 4.1% on their side. So it's, it's hard to go into those more esoteric accounts, um, and advocate for them because there's nobody here lobbying for them. But I will remind you that that's exactly what Hartford has done over the number of years and what's almost bankrupted the state of Connecticut. My point being, it's almost like going in, ordering the meal and then complaining when the bill arrives. You can't do that.
You just referenced, I'm sorry for interrupting, the 4.1%, but that includes the, for the Board of Ed side, that includes the 2 million.
Without a doubt, without a doubt. It does.
Want to be clear that it's not exactly, again, apples to apples and.
But, but you know that carryover, you know that carryover though? That's also going to be helped with the funding that's coming in from other sources, from the state and the federal government. So the carryover is not going to be a net dollar for dollar because anything related to expenditures for, uh, distance learning, anything related to safety protocols, anything related to the, um, the social and emotional well-being and air quality will all be up for review with, uh, the federal government funding that's coming our way.
Which we can't, again, say how much it is. And again, respectfully.
True.
We're going to agree to disagree probably here. We're going to agree to disagree probably here.
Totally understand.
And I went into this kind of understanding that, didn't know if there was an appetite for any sort of compromise. Appreciate the discussion, at the very least, because I think it's important for people to hear what goes into these decisions. And, you know, funding the, you know, at the level and keep it AAA, if there's room to find 150 here and 150 here. I, again, have a great sense that this motion will not pass at this body, but I encourage my colleagues down the line, who will have an opportunity to review, to review these expenditures, to think about some of what, you know, we are talking about here, and some of the perspective that I bring to this, because it is representative of, you know, many people, many people in town, so...
Yeah, I think, I think, I think you're absolutely right, Nancy. And that's the, kind of the frustrating part, is that, again, these are esoteric expenses that people don't, they don't pay attention to, right? It's not about paving your roads. It's not about educating your kids. It's about the financial well-being of the town. And I give, and in fairness, and this isn't a political commentary, I give Brenda a lot of credit on this, because quite frankly, or the first select woman, because it would have been a lot easier for her to sit there and say, you know, the fund balance, the OPEB liability, these are things that are in the future. And it's a hell of a lot easier to say, I'm not going to worry about that stuff. I'm going to punt that down the road to the next generation. We've got some additional tax revenue coming in because of the revaluation, and I'm just going to take that to the bottom line, and I'm going to be the hero. And I'm going to give everybody a zero or a less-than-zero tax increase. And you know what? That's very seductive to a politician that's got to get up and be re-elected. But it would have been the wrong thing to do for the town of Fairfield. It would have been the wrong thing to do for employees. It would have increased the cost over the next 10 years, when we're going to be stuck with having to fund $300 million of capital expenditures. It would have been the easy way out, and it wouldn't have been right. That's not either fiscal discipline, nor is it fiscally conservative. And it's what's gotten the state into trouble. So I give her credit for funding those things. And if we want to address expenses, I'm all for it. I don't want to address funding of things that we've already ordered or approved. That's where I'm coming from.
So I appreciate the discussion, and thank you, Mr. Flynn. You're right. I would have loved to send everybody a check in our town, because of our growth. But again, you know, I consulted a lot, as I mentioned during my budget presentation, with Mr. Flynn, who was the former chairman of the Board of Finance for a number of years, and the chairman, current chairman, to make sure that we were working together, and I was funding these things to the level that they believe is appropriate. And so, yes, a lot goes into it, and it would have been much easier to have done it the way that Mr. Flynn was talking about, because, you know, that option was on the table. I sat in his second-floor conference room, again, for many hours, lots, hundreds of hours, working on this budget, and it was tense and concerning. And the tax rate would have been very concerning had we not had this growth, and we were lucky that we did, because of the things that we did last year to protect our community from an economic impact during the pandemic. So, yes, he's right. There are some hard choices to make, and it would have been easier to do it the other way. But I agree that, I think that this is a very fiscally responsible budget, to fund the appropriate things that our community needs across the board.
So I would just go back to, there is a motion on the table, I believe. And I do have a general comment broadly about some of what we've just discussed here, but I don't have any further comments on the, on the motion on the table.
All right, so there's no further discussion on the item. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Motion failed.
Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Are there any other items of that nature? Because I have a few, a couple things that Jared needs to bring up, but if there's any other items that members would like to make motions on to reduce something or to add something?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jared's going to come up on two items, well, actually, I believe it's three. Three items.
Thank you. And the question came up about the, or actually, was pointed out, the error in the calculation on page three. I just want to reassure the board that this has, you know, no practical impact on the tax rate or anything like that, because that column and those columns are really there just as indicators and to show differences. So it doesn't really have any, any impact on the budget or the...
I hope, I hope the change was received in the spirit in which it was intended, just to point out a typo, not to, okay, thank you.
Completely, yeah, thank you. Okay. I do have two, two adjustments that I would put out for the, for the board's consideration. One is in the, in the area of the ECC, under the police, police revenue, which this is on page 16. All along, we have, even when this was first adopted, we had been assuming $70,000 that would be coming from U. Canons in exchange for their, for us handling their fire calls. The actual amount is $78,000, so that's going to be an addition of $8,000.
What line item, Jared?
This is the, I believe it's referenced as other subsidy under ECC on page 16 of the revenue.
The amount increase again?
$8,000.
The amount is from, is $8,000.
I'll make the motion that we raise that line item by $8,000. Go ahead.
I can second, I'll second it.
Great.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then I have one other change that came to us late, which was, happened before the current director of DPW came in. And this was sort of, yeah, I don't know what the, what exactly the explanation is, but we didn't get word of this change until last week. And so the change is that there is an item on page 17, referenced as miscellaneous park, for $9,097. And this has, this has to do with the rental of picnic tables. It, this came up in the audit of DPW. And so what, the decision at the time was that we would no longer rent picnic tables to the general public. And so therefore, there would be no, no revenue. This $9,097 would not come in. And so the proposal that we're offering for the board's consideration is to eliminate that revenue, and it would go to zero.
Eliminate the revenue or eliminate the expense?
The revenue. This is on page 17.
It's a revenue item. So I'll make the motion to remove the revenue.
I'll second it.
As listed, yep. And I don't have any questions.
Is there a second?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, we second it.
Yep.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Is that all you have, Jared?
It's a post-vote curiosity, really. Is there a reason philosophically we decided to stop renting them? Or it just wasn't something we wanted to manage?
I'm trying to think now. Were we just trying to...
Yeah, it just, it came up in the DPW audit. The auditor flagged it. And so it was something that, that I think was considered, that it was a, for not a lot of revenue, may not be worth the hassle and the tracking and the, of not, just the equipment, the items, the money, all that. So that was, that is the reason. But, but most importantly, that it was, it was part of the audit, and we wanted to make that correction.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, there's not any other items on the budget?
I'm curious if we, and I'm sorry if it's on the agenda and I'm not, about the consulting company? Is that something we have to revisit and vote on?
We have two items coming up. The company that we're hiring to...
SLR?
Do the search for the two positions.
Uh, for the, the... Sorry, is there an opportunity for us to have a vote on the conservation, on the consultancy hired for conservation? Or is that built in as an assumption?
That, my, I've been advised by the town attorney and my administration that because this is an emergency issue, it's not required a vote by the board's selectmen. They're not seeing the town attorney on anymore. I don't know if he still is.
I would, for consideration purposes, moving forward, this is exactly an opportunity, I believe, to engage the board's selectmen, and an opportunity for the public to be able to weigh in. And if it's not here today, so it is, and, you know, at the advice that you're taking, I would just say that moving forward, the public should be afforded the opportunity to be able to weigh in, something that is connected, where conservation should have, have the say, where in a contract sense, the board of selectmen should have a say. Just want to state that.
No, I appreciate that, Nancy. And if it wasn't due to the fact that we, you know, it was a quick thing we had to handle, and this is a temporary firm, they're not taking over our conservation department. They're filling in, so we are...
Okay.
And if, and if I may, someone did bring up several, some ones in phone calls, that this company, while it may not be legally a conflict of interest, that...
Your input is invalid.
Sorry, is that for me?
That wasn't me.
I think maybe somebody was pushing some buttons. I don't know.
Yeah, literally, quite literally. So my, my point being that someone had brought it up, and again, this is where, for me, the public, the opportunity for the public to weigh in would be valuable, because knowing what I know, if it were to come to a vote, I wouldn't be able to support it, because apparently there's some interest in a pro-development company, and I just would want to understand what the implication is on the conservation side of things. So while I know we don't have to vote here today based on the advice of council and otherwise, just would like to bring that up as a point of consideration moving forward.
Absolutely, and I, I wasn't aware of anything of this nature, but I'm happy to review it and look into it a little further, and get you that information. But I wasn't aware of anything like that, but I'll definitely look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion or items on the main budget, I'm gonna, we have a motion on the table.
I, I just want to echo my thanks, because I, I have not yet had an opportunity to respond to all of the emails, which I like to do personally. And Brenda, I see that you, you were able to respond to a lot of people. But just to say to anyone listening, and to those who will go back and review this, you know, I, I hope the takeaway is that, is a few things. One, we, we rely heavily on an engaged citizenry for input and points of view and suggestions for the way things might work. And again, something that perhaps we can incorporate into the process moving forward, something I had suggested with the superintendent, that input in a real, public way is, I think, imperative to a transparent, smooth operating, where people feel heard and listened to. And I, and I want to thank everybody for reaching out to me. But this doesn't have to be, you're either for me or against me, kind of process, as we've seen here. Nor do I want to undermine some of the real fear and frustration and anger that people feel. So while that's not my style, because ultimately, I don't think it will help us in this arena move forward in a productive way, I, I think that I do want to make sure people understand that it might not always go the way we want, and that, you know, you're, we, we do hear your fears and your concerns. And, you know, ultimately, while I cannot support this budget, unfortunately, because I just don't feel like I have enough information to work with and don't agree with some of what's in it, you know, I will be still continuing to work for the success of the town. And where we can help people, I hope that we will continue collectively working together to do that. So just, you know, thank you again for those who, you who have engaged in the process and reached out. And for those of you that are disappointed in the way this seems likely it's going to go today, I, I want to remind people that we will continue to be an advocate for, for everybody the best we can.
I want to, I want to echo Nancy's...
Tom, do you have some comments you want to share?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Jared and his team, the superintendent and Dorian Menzel and their team, the department heads. Brenda, I want to thank you, Tom Bremer, Jackie Bertolone, as well, for all, your all hard work on this budget. I also want to extend my appreciation to the Board of Education. They don't have an easy job, and I appreciate the time and consideration that they gave to this budget. And like Nancy, I want to echo the comments regarding the engaged citizenry. I think it's very important that we have an engaged and educated citizenry. These are, these are not easy issues. These are not easy times. Hearing from you is, is very helpful. It actually frames a lot of thinking. And also, in my instance, frames a lot of how I think things should be communicated and informs more the comments that I make in a public forum related to what's on the minds of, of the public. So I appreciate that and cannot tell you how much I do. So thank you, and I look forward to moving forward here.
Thank you, Tom. And I would just say, you know, this is, I said this during my State of the Town address, that this has been a hell of a year. We've all, you know, handled situations we never thought we would handle before. Certainly not me, leading a town during this situation. It was, it was really difficult, and there was a lot of challenges. And again, I want to thank everyone in our town, all the department heads, our emergency management director, our director of health, and my administration for working so hard to get our community through this. And this has been 100% a challenge. But I am proud of the work that my administration has done to, yet even though, having to deal with unprecedented challenges, able to work and, and make sure that we were aligning with the vision that I said when I came in about transforming things, about changing things. And as I said many times, doing things not the way we always do it. And so I know change is hard, like Mr. Flynn acknowledged earlier. Change is hard, and, but change is necessary, in my opinion. And so I, I understand the frustration of some of our residents. And again, I will reiterate that I, my door is always open. I've been saying that since the day I put my hand up and swore to take this office, that my door is truly open, and I am willing to listen to anyone that wants to call me or meet with me about any of the issues that I'm working on here on behalf of the community. And I appreciate both of you for all your hard work and for your thoughtful discussion and input. And I think that's how, that's how it should be. And I think that's how, um, that's how it should be, civil and thoughtful. And so, I hope we, uh, set the tone for the rest of the budget season, uh, that we're all treating each other with respect, because like Nancy said, we may not always agree, but we can be disagreeable in a, in a polite and, um, civil fashion. And so, on that note, I am going to call for a vote. And I'll, uh, okay, we'll just call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And the motion carries two to one. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you for the discussion.
We're not there yet, Nancy.
Well, one, one tick box ticked. So, good luck, uh, good luck in the process throughout, um, and I too want to echo the thanks. Thank you for your, your hard work, thank you to the department heads, thank you to the emergency management team, and, um, I look forward to continuing to work with the both of you, so onward.
Onward, thanks, Nancy. Item number six, here, consider and authorize the purchasing authorities to enter into the proposed agreement for executive recruitment services for conservation director between Strategic Government Resources, SDR, and the town of Fairfield, um, in the amount of $24,900 plus any additional costs for any supplemental services that set forth in the agreement. Funding for this contract is available, and then they have the account number. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Uh, I will second.
Okay, uh, opening up for discussion.
Can I ask a quick question, is how is this going to be paid for? What line item?
Jared, where, what department is this coming from? This is for the concert, well, for, we're doing for both, um. HR, no, no, budget director and conservation director. Where's the fund, do you know, what line?
I believe they're coming out of our. I believe this is coming out of the fees and professional services of the, uh, finance department.
Can you check that and make sure? Just, I, I don't know, those, those fees and professional services are typically for the audit, so I just want to check that.
Yeah, we will check, we'll double, double check that.
Yeah, the, um, he, here's what I know, um, so in the past, I, I don't know much about getting a conservation department, uh, chief, in terms of how hard the market is for that. I do know that on the finance side, it's a very tough, uh, tough market. It's a, there, there are, um, I've been interviewing quite a lot for a client of mine here in, here in Connecticut, and it is hard to find qualified candidates, so, uh, we have had a resort to using outside firms uh, to help us identify qualified candidates. I also know that this is a position that you've been looking for, for quite some time. So, with that knowledge, uh, and in fact, I do like the fee that you got for both positions, um, I can support this. I will ask, uh, if the town attorney is on, is this, uh, contract in accordance with all of our, um, legal requirements, and do you have any concerns over the contract? Mr. Baldwin?
Yeah, I'm here, can you, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have reviewed it, Tom, and it is all, um, appropriate, um, there are no issues that I see.
Okay, thank you.
I, uh, it's my understanding that conservation as a commission is allowed to weigh in on the hiring of the director, is that not?
Yeah, well, actually, yes, they're weighing in on this. Our HR director, uh, spoke directly with the chairperson and included her in all of this, and when the candidate, they're, they're going to put input in, this firm actually interviews people, uh, me, it interviews our HR, it interviews the conservation department and the commission, come up with a list of, uh, items or qualifications or things that they want, and then they'll go back and that's the, be the criteria, obviously in addition to the qualifications needed to even fill the position, the statutory requirement, right? So, those things will be, um, addressed, and the conservation commission is going to be, uh, 100% involved. And per our charter, they choose, they choose the next director. But obviously, they're going to have some consultation with me, because I act, I have to approve their choice. So, we're, they're going to be very involved, Nancy, just so you're aware.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just want to jump in, Jared was able to look up that answer, Tom, that you had asked earlier?
Yeah.
The fees are coming out of the HR's professional, uh, fee.
Got it, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm good.
Anything else, Nancy?
No.
Okay, um, all in favor of this item?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, uh, motion carries unanimously. The next item, to here and consider and authorize the purchasing authorities to enter into the proposed agreement for executive recruitment services for a budget director between Strategic Government Resources and the town of Fairfield, in the amount of $23,400 plus any additional costs for any supplemental services that set forth in the agreement. Funding for this contract is available in the account number, do I have a motion to approve?
Seconding, or moved.
And I'll second it.
And I've already spoken to this item, I was taking them kind of both together.
I have no further questions.
I just want to acknowledge, um, that, you know, this is a very important position in our town government, and especially in our finance department, and we did have this job posted for a period of time, and so it's, um, we're, we're realized that we needed this level of assistance, because, um, we, we really need a high-level, uh, recruitment for this position. So, I think this is a good, uh, choice for our town, and I'm hoping it's going to result in a very high-level employee in our, as our budget director. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, well, we're, it looks like we're done.
Thank you so much for today.
Well, thank you both, and, um, again, I just want to, uh, say for the public who may be listening, I'm, I'm here for any questions, please email me or call me, I'm happy to talk to anyone about the process, about the budget, or anything else they're interested in, um, about what we're doing at Town Hall with the reorganization. I want to thank you both for all your time during the budget process, uh, for our board, and that, that, that goes out to you too, any questions you have for me, feel free. And I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you.
Take care.
Take care.
Bye-bye.